We call the meeting to order. First of all, I want to wish, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and hope you have a wonderful New Year. Please be safe, have fun, and we will certainly look forward to continuing our relationships with each one of us. Thank you very much. If you would, please, by your head, to the Commissioner's invocation. Oh Lord God, Father, we come before you at this special time, asking for your forgiveness of our sins, asking for your love, asking for your guidance as we continue to make decisions for this county and its citizens. We are ever thankful, O Lord, for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, and we are appreciative that we are able to continue those and ask that you be with us as we try and maintain them. We thank you, O Lord, for your love, we thank you, O Lord, for your guidance, and we ask that you continue to be with us, and at this time of year particularly be with those who are mourning or need your healing, and we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Our call on Jeff Todd, representing our law firm, will lead us into pledge allegiance. Jeff, Todd?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the December the 4th session. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion enough to be approved.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstained. Abstained, as I was not here last time, I had the honor, and it was a distinct pleasure to be in Athens, Georgia, for four and a half days at the newly elected Commissioner's training program. And we tell those folks when they start that they're getting ready to drink from the fire hose, and by the time we're through, they believe it. The session started about breakfast, about seven every morning, and ended with dinner, 7:30 or 8 o'clock every night. We had two newly elected Commissioners for Harris Counties, Rob Grant, who's sitting right out here, and Andrew Lerner. They were there, and I think certainly I got to see everything that was going on, and I think they learned an awful lot, and it was... I will say this, at the end of it, the last day, I had the... All of the staff from ACCG, the staff from Carl Wilson Institute of Government, and the staff from the University of Georgia, who had all partnered to help put this thing on, and had them come down front, and just asked for a round of applause to show the appreciation to them for all of their hard work. And I am proud to say that it was a rousing standing applause that was given to all of us. It was a phenomenal session, you know, you can't remember everything you get, but you at least have a familiarity with many, many items that you maybe didn't even realize you did, and you know where to go get answers. So it was a wonderful thing, and certainly Rob and Andrew represented us well in that group. I just wanted to report that. Okay, any citizens' names?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any old business? Well, speaking of old business, I've got a couple of things, just want to bring you up to date. The first one is that yesterday was Nancy's birthday. And we certainly wish her well, and we are glad that she has put up with all of the various commissions from the number of the years that she has, and thank you Nancy, and hope you're right here for me. The other thing is that we have two Commissioners, being newly elected, we have, that means we have two retiring Commissioners with us tonight. And that's Martha Tuning and Jim Wood. They have represented us well, they have represented the citizens in their districts well, they have certainly put their heart into what they did, they've spent an awful lot of time doing it. And so I want to ask the two of them if they would please just come up here and stand here. And we just have a little plaque that we want to give you. And it says, "In recognition of James R. Woods and Martha F. M. Tuning for dedication and service to the citizens of Harris County, Georgia as Commissioner of District 1 and 2." Jim's term was January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2018, so you're not quite through yet. And Martha started in November the 18th, 2014 through the end of this year, presented by the Harris County Board of Commissioners. I want to give those to you with our deep gratitude and thanks and appreciation. I would just like to thank everybody who's here, and all the staff, and all the citizens who's helped me over the years, and I hope at least I made a C from some of you.
Well, I dito on that, and I appreciate the constituents of District 1 allowing me this opportunity. I've learned a lot, but a lot of hard decisions to make, I have to admit. This has been the best group to make those decisions with, because you know, your part is in the right place, trying to do the right thing, the best thing, so I know we all try our best, but hopefully the results are the same. But thank you all.
Thank you both of y'all again. It's... I think anyone who offers themselves as a public servant, it's not always easy. And we all learn a lot, and disappoint some people, and we make some people real happy. And I know we all try our best, and that's all we can do, so thank y'all. Okay. New business? We have a sheet in your packet for appointments and reappointments to various boards, committees, and authorities. And some of these we can dismiss or dispense with tonight, should we choose, and there are others that we need to get some input, sometimes from the group that needs to put someone in their place. But I will... It's there for you, if anyone would like to make a motion.
I have five, I think that's right, needs to keep you straight.
Okay.
I have, I would like to make the motion that these five, they either return to the board, but there is one minimum that I have.
Okay.
The first one being John Britt, I would like to recommend that he be returned to the Planning Commission as the District Rep, and he has agreed to do that. Then on the Rec Board, I would like to recommend that Mike Duson be placed on the Rec Board in the at-large position to replace Rob Grant, and he has also agreed. He is a veteran, he has served on the Rec Board before, so he knows what he's getting into. I also would like to recommend that Brad Johnson from the Mountain Hill Association be returned to the Board and guard at Ray for the Board of Education as the liaison be returned to the Rec Board. And I also, on the Development Authority, would like to recommend that Mark Smith be returned as the at-large representative, and he also has agreed.
All right, those five, I'm going to try and keep up with these and we do a one-based motion.
Yeah, we'll do the one, yes.
All right, Ms. Andrews, are there any that you would like to move forward with?
No, I have one to make, but I don't have the name this time.
Okay. Ms. Wood?
I would, I will let Rob do it.
Okay, you let Rob do it. Laura?
And I would like for Andrew Sore to make my presentation.
Okay. All right. We put out a couple of others in. By their charter, in our term, the District 2 Commissioner is on the Airborne Committee, because the Airborne is in that first district, so I would nominate Rob Grant to fill that position.
Mr. Trump, there may be a conflict with Mr. Grant's profession, so that he may not be able to go to those meetings.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Chair, Commissioner Woods has agreed to be reappointed to that committee and Mr. Grant's.
And I'll take that back, and we'll talk about that, yeah, okay, that's fine. We have to replace Mr. Woods on the Health Board.
And that is your designee, if you don't do it?
Yep. Okay. I see that Chris Bootson, his term is expiring, and he's agreed to, for another term as on the Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and put him up.
Steve Morgan?
Yeah, yeah. Water Bill Assistant Steve Morgan has agreed to continue, and I'd like to go ahead and put him there.
The tax? Yeah, the tax assessors could be appointed.
Yeah. I don't know, it's just that it's not the most way to get in here, isn't it?
I thought I had it, sorry.
Chris, Chris is interesting, we haven't tried to figure out the one I know is this one.
He is a, no, I don't remember very far, but he is the, I think he's a, or a, I think.
The one I know is a?
I think it's, I think it's Alendor.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dowling, spot for the Public Improvement Authority. Go ahead and nominate him there. Which position? It's the bottom, the last of the five down there.
Then may I nominate Eric Lang for that position, Public Improvement Authority?
I think that's it we can do tonight, yeah, that's it, we're nice. If no one has any objections, is there a...
That's fine.
Then let that be Ms. Langston's motion, and is there a second to her motion?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Andrews, second, so we got a motion to second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand, unless you care. And that means that our list, the next meeting will be shorter. Thank you, and I appreciate those folks who are willing to continue to serve or new to serve. Okay. The next item on the agenda, and I'm going to call on Clint Chastain, our CFO, to come forward and present, discuss the audit, along with representatives from Robinson Grimes, who they, you know, they move in with us every year for a few months while they do this audit. So we have Steve Voenig, who is here, who is the auditor, and he is also acutely backed up by the ones that tried to keep Stephen in line every time he was up here, Laura Taber and Eric Tynne. So appreciate y'all being here, appreciate all the work you did, and it's nice to see you in the office. Hopefully we hear some good things, thank you. Clint, you and Stephen, go right ahead.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present, in a timely fashion, the financial statements submitted through June 30, 2018. Just need to get that as copied, you'll notice it's marked as draft. The important thing to note is that the county's portion is complete and will be when we state deadline this year. Mr. Voenig will go into a little more detail on the draft status of whatever it is, but the overall impression of the financial statements this year is a very positive document, which most of the trends in here are all pointing in the very right directions. I'll go through some of these and highlight some points of emphasis tonight. You'll join me and go ahead and get into those, we'll turn to page five of that document. And it said in the middle of the page, where it says, "At the end of current fiscal year." If you look there, the general fund's unrestricted fund balance was at 7.9 million. That constitutes an increase of 1.3 million dollars from prior year's unrestricted fund balance. If you remember, from this same number last year, we showed a $3 million decrease. The biggest contributing factor to that was obviously the increased mill rate, two and a half mills that we took in. We also saw other revenue increases over prior year, such things as the charges for services, fines, the local office sales tax, insurance premium tax, state inmate revenues, ambulance fees, and interest earnings also played a role into that. But again, the mill rate increase certainly was the largest factor in that. This 7.9 million dollars represents 37.9% of general fund expenditures, which is above the 25% minimal level that we talked about of working capital that we'd like to stay above, and we're well above that. We actually increased that number from last year, it was about 36% last year, and that number, again, is trending up to roughly 38%. On that same page, if you look just above that, in the middle of the page, where it says, "The county's governmental funds." The governmental funds total ending fund balance decreased from 16.9 million to about 12.9 million, which could sound discouraging, just looking at the decrease there, but this was actually a spin-down of prior year's restricted funds that related to 2004 splotch, '09 splotch, 2014 splotch, and LME funds from 2016 and '17. And all this was spent towards capital purposes that served the public, such as roads, fire trucks, parks, library, 911 upgrades, business park improvements, and allocations for the cities and municipalities in the county. So that number decreasing means we're finishing up some projects that have been lingering out there for a while, especially with some of these older splotches, and really, they only, there's a tiny, a small portion for remaining on 2004 that we spent, and 2014 splotch is well on its way to be spent also. If you will, now turn to page 13.
If I can on page five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the difference between the unrestricted fund balance and the unrestricted fund balance of the general fund is basically a splotch. If you look at the middle of that, it says unrestricted fund balance of 8,000, 8,127,000. And then below it says unrestricted fund balance of general funds is 7,912,000.
Now, the 8.1 million is looking at total governmental funds, which total governmental funds included the general fund, splotch, the capital projects funds, a lot of the other ones that are on there. The point just below that of 7.9 million is only looking at general fund itself, unrestricted portion.
Would you change to page 19? It shows a fund balance of 8,621,000. Is, what is the additional on that?
That is made up on the general fund of, so there's five categories of the fund balance. There's non-spendable, for which that is inventory and prepaid items that are up in the access. There's committed funds, which is the 327,000, those relate to Eldersly Park, funds that are committed to spend on Eldersly Park. The assigned balance and the unassigned balance constitute the unrestricted portion of the 7.9 million, but the 527,000 is money that is assigned to the fiscal year 19 budget that is currently, this year. That's money that, it's unrestricted, but we've assigned it to be used in fiscal year 19 budget.
I just want to be sure that I was half-understanding.
Good move. So page 13, four paragraphs up from the bottom. And this relates back to the spin-down of the restricted funds of splotch and LME that we have in no good, that shows the capital assets were 55% depreciated versus 54% prior year. This indicates that for the first time in several years, the newer assets are replacing an older fleet that we've had. And again, that goes back to these splotches and these LME funds, and we're adding to it, to an aging fleet, replacing some of these items that were on there. So that's another positive trend that we're looking at. If you will, turn to page 18. And in the middle of the page, on page 18, we're not a small print, but we're looking at the unrestricted investment earnings. And under, total column under unrestricted investment earnings, we show just under $100,000, 99, $99.5,000. And that is investment, unrestricted investment earnings for the total statement of activities, for the total government. In fiscal year 17, that number was 40,000, just over $40,000. So we've more than doubled our unrestricted investment earnings from one year to the next. If you would, look back over on page 17, just on the other side. Under the Assets column, Investments, you'll see 5.2, or excuse me, 12.1 million dollars. That 12.1 million dollars last year was 5.2 million dollars under Investments. And what we've done is we've shifted our cash management model away from long-term, non-liquid CDs and high cash balances kept in bank accounts that charge daily fees, and we've moved those to Georgia Fund 1, that has competitive rates, the cash is highly liquid, it's available for us, and it shows a monthly return on interest instead of waiting two years to tie down cash. And this activity, that we see that's doubled, that wasn't even a full year of those funds being in Georgia Fund 1. So I think this year they were in, we're going to see even better returns on those versus even what we saw this year. So again, another positive trend that we're looking at here. Let's move to page 24, and let's talk about the enterprise funds. And what I'm going to concentrate on here is the middle, one of the middle rows here, the operating income and loss. So we're going to look at waterworks, solid waste, and airport. So waterworks, when we're looking at operating revenues, which are the charges for services, and then at their operating expenses, your personal services, your payroll, your purchase services, the water that they're buying from other entities, professional services, projects they're doing, materials and supplies towards those projects, and depreciation. Their operating income for the water department is about $556,000 for fiscal year 2018. If we look at solid waste, we have an operating income of $474,000. And then when we look at airport, airport is showing a loss of about 344 operating loss. Now, each one, I won't go into a lot of detail, elaborate detail on this, but depreciation is really what plays the biggest factor. Now, each one has depreciation within waterworks, solid waste, and airport, but airport has hit pretty hard with that large depreciation number. And what that tells me is that the physical growth of the airport, the runway work, the taxiways, the teahangers, corporate hangars, that although those have all been federally funded and have not hit us up front, that the daily cost of maintaining, operating, and depreciating those assets has really outpaced the revenue generation potential that we see right now of the airport. And those assets are such assets that they're long-term, I mean, it's going to be 20 or 30 years before those, you know, are depreciated far enough down that... So, and that's just what I'm saying, is the revenues that we see for airport are somehow going to have to, we're going to have to look at those to somehow try to overcome that continued loss that we keep seeing on the airport side. You know, that's, with the enterprise funds, our waterworks and solid waste continue to have growth that makes drive, the airport is an enterprise fund that, you know, we need to find ways to look at that revenue potential. One thing I'd like to address is that when going back and looking, you know, we had a lot of audits in a short period of time. I went back and looked at the first audit that I was really a part of, was 2015. We had five audit findings in 2015. In this copy, or this year's version, we only have one audit finding. So we've gone from five down to one within that period of time that we've been here. So I kind of like you to take note of that. And from my point of view, I'd like to thank the board. I just want to be the county manager for making some tough decisions to help get these. I mean, these numbers could be, are all the tough decisions that you guys made, I've had to make during the year. The department heads need to be recommended and applauded for the tight budgeting that they stuck with for this year. That's helped tremendously. And Robinson and Grimes coming in and making sure that we got this time, their team coming in, make sure that we got this done in a timely fashion. Unless you guys have any questions, I'll turn it over to Stephen at this time to give his side.
Any questions from anyone at this point? Okay, Stephen?
Thank you, Eric.
And by the way, we still continue to thank you for catching up all those three years in a very short order and helping us get back those, thank you.
We've had a long relationship, and it's one that I am more interested in, Robinson and Grimes. As it relates to the audit, I do think this is a positive statement for the county, it's a clean audit. We had double auditor adjustments this year, which I have to point out is significant improvement over the last seven years, significant. Two things that I'll discuss here briefly are, well, A, the financial statements already draft on that. Now, that has nothing to do with the county's accounting system or anything like that. What we are waiting on is the Harris County Health Department, which is separately audited by another auditor, and they have not issued their report yet. Because it's a discreetly presented component unit, it does have one column that shows in these financial statements, but until they give us their sign-on, we can't put our final stamp on this. So it's not, it's not on the county's side, we're just waiting on the health department to do it. to get, and have that. As far as the findings go, if you go back to page one hundred and thirty-two, there are, there are two that are listed here, but there really need to be one. The first one is limited segregation duties, and that's one that we'll talk about in just a second. The second one is related to pledges and collateral. And the county is required to have collateral pledge for any cash that they have in the bank account at the bank that's in excess of NIC trusts. So it has to be fully collateralized. And we received a confirmation from a local lady that stated that Superior Court cash accounts were not fully collateralized. Well, subsequent to printing these financial statements, the banking track of that and provide those documentation otherwise, said that the Superior Court cash accounts were fully collateralized, and, and we're satisfied with what they provided on that. So that will come off.
If I could address that item, this is more procedural question. I don't know if I should address it to you, to you, or to you. That finding, was the, was the Department of Superior Court notified of this and when?
She was notified.
When?
Yesterday, Monday.
Yesterday.
Yes, ma'am. I received this report on Friday afternoon. Mr. Dowling was, was on vacation, he returned Monday. He and I discussed the steps that we needed to take since they related to Superior Court. We saw that we wouldn't relay that information to her to get her opportunity.
Okay. When this was found, just say any department head, not necessarily Department of Superior Court, but if you have a finding, that may be, for lack of a better term than that, if you find them, do you go to that department head to see if perhaps they have backup information that you might need?
Generally, yes. As it relates to cash accounts, maybe that was a miscommunication on, on the part of the banks, because we typically, we typically, we typically go directly to the banks to get that information, and then, you know, we'll discuss it with the county finance office.
Why would you not go to the department head to ask for that information, I guess is my question?
Well, their act is an independent third-party auditor, so they have to receive information from an independent source, the bank acts as an independent source.
Okay, I got that part. I got that part. So what you're telling me is if a department head, or if a department comes up with a negative, for lack of a better word, finding, they're not notified of that? Is that what you're telling me?
No. They weren't notified in this case.
Yesterday. But when this was, when this was determined, they were not notified? Is that what you're telling me?
I would let the auditor, this is the auditor's findings, the auditor made these comments. I would let the auditor determine, tell us why he wrote this up on his letterhead and did not tell the elected official, or any of the department head at that matter.
Sure. Well, when, when we had our conversations with, I mean, generally, yes, I would, I would ordinarily discuss it with the department head. As it relates to cash, a lot of times the cash collateralization is not based on department by department, but it's the county overall. And so that may have been oversight on my, on my part, that I didn't communicate that directly over this year. Generally, the cash collateralization is not handled department by department, the bank will collateralize it for all county.
I got that, I get that.
And so that, so that, that, that is my fault. I did, I did discuss it with Stacy.
So that was an error, ma'am?
Well, it was, it was an error on the bank's part, and I should have been more, I, I guess I should have discussed that with Stacy sooner, and I discussed it today.
Okay. When will this be corrected?
Uh, well, this is, as this is in draft, it'll be corrected in the final copy, certainly.
And she has liked, you know, make a note in minutes that I would like a copy of the corrected before sending to the state, please? Thank you.
And also, clarification, it will be retracted in the audit, page one thirty-two?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Will it also be retracted in the management letter?
Yes.
Both, both documents?
Both documents.
Yeah, and I might, I would like that.
Certainly.
Copy. I can't speak to the others, but I would like it.
No, and I, and I wish that we had received correct information from the bank the first time. I mean, I, I take responsibility for not having communicated that with Stacy sooner, but I, I, I can't speak to, to the information we received from the third-party confirmation.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Don't we typically get a copy of the final audit for this estate?
Yes.
I'm just trying to make it clear that I'm going to call, I just wanted to make sure that that's, I was thinking that that would.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's rather unusual for us to be delivering this in a half all night, but as soon as we get correct, you know, the information.
When do you anticipate the health department's audit being completed?
Before year end, is what I have been told, which is preferable.
Any day? I'm sorry, when? Any day?
Before year end, is what I have been told.
Oh, before year end.
Okay, so that is the, that's the finding. We'll talk more about the segregation duties in this minute. In addition to the financial statements you also have in front of you are two, two letters from us, which are, one is our communication to those toward the government, which is, which is you, and discusses our responsibilities and these estimates in the financial statements, that there were no disदications from management, and again, that there were no larger adjustments to the financial statements. So, so excellent there. To that point, because there were no larger adjustments in the financial statements, we had a bit more time in order to look at internal controls countywide, and this is some of the requests that the, that Randy and Clint. And our, our discussion of those internal control points is in the management letter, which you also have a copy of. The, the, the big picture related to that is, it's, it's, it's great news that we had no larger adjustments to the financial statements. That's, that's a huge improvement and the growth in the county. And I can also point out that the general fund expenditures over the last five years in the picture, they've gone up by about fifty percent from fourteen point eight million to twenty-one million dollars in the last five years. With that growth in, in the activity, there's also a risk of, of internal controls not being robust enough. So years ago, we kicked around the idea of recommending an internal audit position with the county. The question was whether or not the county was big enough to, to merit that, or that was, you know, maybe too significant of a jump. But the, the net impact of the internal control points that we had is that we would recommend additional accounting personnel in the finance and accounting department. And the, the main reason for that is to, is to permit and to allow, or to handle more of the data they will keep in, or in order to allow the CFO to do more of the oversight and monitoring roles that you would think of as internal audit, or as you would think of as a typical CFO position. Things that we've discussed as in these internal control points, opportunities for additional oversight related to monitoring adherence to county policy on bids and bid and proposals, documentation of new bank reconciliation, just marginal adjustments. And again, these are not county-wise, some of these are in various departments, but documentation that the hand releases are under due regulatory, the signatory door to open that accounts, add whatever conflicts with the current portion of our mission, or something like that. So each of the, each of those is indicative of, of an opportunity for additional oversight. And again, with all of the road in the county over the last five years, the road, the, the county complexity, I think it's important to look forward to what the next five years are going to entail for the county, and, and how you can best position yourselves for that. So, while, it's a good report, good, good financial statements, and we're going to find, there's still many things to, to look for, for blessings from it. So I think, if I can, I would, I would ask that this be, maybe it's not a position, but conditionally approved upon, upon receiving the health department information, and as soon as we get that, we put our schedule on the bottom. So with that, thank you, Brent, for all your work in all of this, and Randy, and Nancy as well. Thank you very much. Any, any other questions? Mr. Chairman?
Are you going to stay there in a minute? Or you can get, would you, or just give me a call? You don't have to stay, just give me a call.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion that we approve the draft audit, understanding that we will get a, that new management letter and a new audit, a completed audit, that will have the finding that's an error, and that will include the health department's final audit.
Second? Motion and a second? Discussion?
What if, what if we don't get the health department's audit by December thirty-first, and the deadline for this document is to be received by the state is December thirty-first? Why if that happens? Then why?
It's been your recommendation that I contact the state and go ahead and give them what we have at that point, so that they have our, our copy. And then, once we receive the health department's, we'll send it at that point in time.
So the state will tell me to receive it?
That's right.
Sounds good.
All right. Anything else? In favor, please, since I raised a hand? All right. Anything else? Again, thank you, Robinson, Grimes, appreciate it very, very much. Thank, thank you. All right. Next, County Manager, project updates?
Mr. Chairman, order commissioners, you know, half the fiscal year is almost completed, and a lot of the projects we're working on are, have also been almost completed. Let me add the highlights. Number three, purchased commercial fitness equipment for the community center, that is ongoing. Equipment has been ordered for that, various equipment. Number twelve, the prison locking system and intercom system, that started this week. The consultant, SDBC, has come over to the prison and is beginning to work on that project that will be ongoing in earnest in January. Number thirteen, the two new trucks for the public works department has been delivered. My grand is real excited about that. Number twenty-two, restocking various county roads, that is on rebid. The bids are due in January, and the board should have that for consideration in the first meeting in February. Number twenty-six, Eldersley Park, with all the amount of rain we've been having, all of our construction projects have been delayed. The Day Soul project, the Eldersley Park project, it, it just, it just rains too much. So that project is, has been delayed, but the turn lane, out of standard paving, has been in the turn lane process, they started today, but it's going to rain Thursday for us. So they're going to work a couple of days and then take off before the holidays. So Eldersley Park is progressing. Number thirty-three, remark of the airport runway and the crack seal project for the airport. GDOT has approved the sculpting processing, we're still reviewing that, so that should be on the board's agenda on January fifteenth for that consideration. Number forty, the water meter replacement project. About five hundred of the eighty-one hundred water meters have been installed, so we're approaching number five hundred. A chief or representative have come down and talked to us today, an unannounced visit, and that visit went very well. The State Route two nineteen water relocation project will begin in February and be completed in June of next year. Number forty-three, the conference of master plan. The next meeting is in January, and that project should be wrapped up in April for the DCA, Department of Community Affairs, to approve in June.
The second meeting? The second meeting?
June fifteenth. The next meeting is June, January the fifteenth, at five o'clock. Number forty-four, the state required pre-audit for the prison has been concluded. The prison, of course, came through flying colors. Once we get the written report, we will pass that on to the board for their information. And pre-a means the Prison Rape Elimination Act, and that's a state requirement every three years. Number forty-five, Meliways. Option number seven, we saw a glimpse of that this week, it's being put in final form. Once I get option seven in final form, that will be presented to the board via email, and then we are scheduling option seven to be on January fifteenth. So January fifteenth, we're targeting options one through seven, and go through that process again. So January fifteenth is targeted to have option seven and review options one through Number forty-six, Rails to Trails. We should get the federal funding in May for the T-grant and proceed on after May. I'm hoping that project will be completed by this time next year, if all things go well. So far it is. And that's on the agenda tonight. The agreement we've been waiting for, for about five or six years, is now received. It's getting really close. Number forty-seven, hotel, hotel tax increase from three to five percent. Again, that is, has, has been approved. The impacted hotels have been notified twice, and that takes effect in January. Number forty-eight, the site ordinance has been on the January fifteenth commission meeting also, January fifteenth. Forty-nine, the Day Soul's string reroute of that project, we had a meeting today. Again, that project is about one and a half months delay due to weather. But so far, everything's going well. It's about fifty percent completed. We're on top, we're not on top, but we're on budget, but due to incoming weathers, it's about a month, month and a half delay. And that's about it in, in a nutshell. Is there a question you want to add, Andrew?
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Todd, you want to talk to us about this GDOT agreement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Very briefly, I'll tell you that John has gone over this agreement when the fine tooth cone finds it to be similar, to similar GDOT projects, and approves the agreement as to form. And he and I both discussed with the county manager, of course, that the county's portion being the funding, their local match has already been budgeted, and also the timeline, which is baked into this agreement, is something that the county manager is certain that the county can meet. So from our perspective, there's certainly no reason not to approve it tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll make that, since I've been, we have been working on it for, ever since I've been a commissioner, and came up with my so-called, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? There ain't none. All in favor of the motion to approve this, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries your names. Anything else, Mr. Todd?
No, sir. Glad to be with you tonight, particularly when John is available for duty, but just not here. I'm glad to be here.
Right. Is there any need for an executive session on your side? I want to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, motion second. All, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Again, Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you, hope you have a safe course home, and good times over. Thank you very, very much.